All right, welcome everyone. It's 6:00 PM on August 19th. This is the City Council Work Section for the city of Bel Air Beach, Florida. Please rise and join in our pleasure.
I'd like to read this through the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Renee, would you please call?
Councilmember Frank Bankard.
Present.
Councilmember Lloyd Roberts.
Here.
Councilmember Kim Elliott.
Present.
Mayor Dave Gaddis.
Here.
City Manager Kyle Reeffler.
Here.
And City Attorney Randy Mora.
Present.
Renee, before we get started, I think what we're going to do is we're going to flip the agenda items around a little bit. We're going to take number one, and number three, and number two, and number four. It just makes perfect sense if we're going to be discussing something concerning towers or anything like that, we should do it before we actually review it, just in case there's something that comes to light. Something else that I'd like to discuss quickly is, it's kind of been waiting only for a while. Everyone, please remember that it is not our responsibility to police the city. We're, we complain, just like everyone else does, I don't want anyone to ever get in trouble for thinking that they have the ultimate authority over whatever it is. I know that there's various items that's come up over the past few years that have weighed heavy on our hearts, and we wish we could do something about it, but ultimately, it falls back on the city staff, and code enforcement, and the city attorney. Mr. Mora, if you could get anything you'd like to comment on John Mariano.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hearing your comments, my statement would just be to echo the sentiment that, you know, in our Schoolhouse Rocks version of it all, you guys in the legislative branch, and most especially Kyle being the executive, and you guys provide direction in that respect on policy, and then the executive executes and enforces, and so that's where that authority sits regardless of the issue. And I think that we should, it's always helpful to be reminded of how those separation powers interplay.
Thank you, Mr. Mora. All right, let's go right into agenda item number one, which is insurance presentation. Mr. Reeffler, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. So, last year, I called upon Mr. Kyle Stokoe to try and give us a proposal to be competitive with our current insurance provider, which is the Florida League of Cities. Last year, it was a higher year, and we weren't able to get anything, a quote goes close. But this year, he came around and started working with me about in June, in trying to provide competitive coverage for our current insurance policy. He has a proposal, which I'd like him to present to the city council. And then just last week, which is a typical timeline for FLC, we got our quote for their insurance. I've included the policy changes, also included the email, just kind of covering some of the perks that they have. And the two invoices, one, the quote this year, which has gone up again. So, our current policy, which we paid the fourth quarter, the total premium for the year was $77,261. And we just got our quote for the upcoming fiscal year, which is 2025, and now we're up to a total premium of $85,489. So we continue to see an increase with our premium, most significant last year's increase, which went from $53,726 up to the $77,261. So that was a very significant increase, which was primarily the property liability, or property insurance, which was actually a 43.81% increase. So this year, we're facing another 10.65% increase, and it looks, if you compare the two invoices, it's all on the general liability side. But I think it's important to note that we continue to see increases with our current provider, and I'd like to have Mr. Stokoe present his proposal to the council.
I'd like to add for that intro, good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. My name is Kyle Stokoe, Brown &amp; Brown Insurance. As Kyle said, I've been in for about a patch a year and a half on getting a competitive insurance proposal for the city. So I put together today just kind of an overview of who we are, an overview of my firm, who we are, why we're here, and the proposal that we put in front of you. So just a quick overview, Brown &amp; Brown, we are a full-service international brokerage firm, established back in 1939 in Daytona Beach, Florida. For the past 80 years, we've grown to over 500 offices worldwide. We have over 18,000 teammates, and we are now the largest insurance intermediary in Florida. So we have about 50 offices throughout the state, and 35 of our teammates throughout the state. I work for a special resale division called Brown &amp; Brown Public Sector. So we are 100% focused on the Florida public entities. We self-service and manage property casualty and employee benefits coverage for local governments. We currently have over 200 public entities and place about over $180 million in annual insurance premiums. What that does is, that kind of gives us, as a broker, we're not a direct-to-insurance market, we are a broker, so we're an intermediary, and we can go out and get quotes from other markets. That gives us kind of the ability to offer what we call concierge over service. Our desired position is to be an extension of your staff, and we handle all things insurance-related on your behalf and work with you to make sure that your city is protected. Just for a reference, some of the local entities that I personally handle the insurance for, City of Treasure Island, City of Bel Air Beach, Diamond Canyon Shores, and the Penelison Coast Fire District. So just because we're located in Daytona doesn't mean we don't have a kind of a local presence here, over here all the time. So, the real reason why I'm here, this is our proposal, our all-in premium this year, and this is a quote from the Preferred Governmental Insurance Trust. So there's two big insurance pools in the state, FMIT, for municipal insurance trust, and Pidget, the Preferred Governmental Insurance Trust. Both very sound pools that government entities get their insurance from, coverages are very similar, additional services are very similar, so on or the other, you're in good hands either way. But what we've proposed today is an all-in premium of $76,458. That's for your property, your liability, your auto lines, and workers' comp. In addition to the insurance, this is, there's a lot more that comes with the package, so for that same premium, you get all this in addition for no additional cost, so you get a dedicated loss control representative, which will be available to you to come on-site, perform loss control endeavors, will do building inspections, that sort of thing. We have a full suite of online training resources. There is the Preferred Priority, which is our new turnkey disaster recovery program. There's also a safety grant of $5,000 available annually, and then you'll get a full-on property appraisal by a third party, and you get a dedicated service team, which is us, who are on your behalf to handle the insurance. I'm going to get into a little bit more detail with those in the following slides, but I want to focus on some of the coverages really quick. So, our all-in premium, $76,000, we are, as Kyle said, about 10 and a half percent under what the renewal is this year. One of the big things, though, is the coverage differences. So when you look on this slide here, on the right, so my job as an insurance broker is to go through insurance policies, kind of tear them apart, and figure out how I can make them better, and look for exclusions and things that I can improve on. So I went through your current policy, and that's what I based my insurance quote off of. I found this exclusion, and this is only part of it, I couldn't get the whole in this slide, but basically, this is a wind exclusion that is in your current package policy. So if you're looking at where all those Xs are, metal box on the side, that is in reference to a building number on your property schedule. So this exclusion is stating that this building does not have wind coverage. So what I did is I took your current schedule, put it in self-format, and matched it up with this endorsement of this exclusion to show what that looks like, what all, how much of your property schedule is excluded for wind. And everything in red, currently does not have any coverage on it. Storm surge is also part of, and so in the event that a hurricane comes, I'm not confident that your current policy will respond. So, the goals of the backflip from you from Pidget, full wind coverage, no wind exclusions, there's no exclusion with relation to the coast, how far you are, so basically you have the full $5 million in total insurance value for the city, is available in a storm. So just to kind of go on, and the rest of the coverage as well is pretty much apples-to-apples. We matched the limits and most of the deductibles, so it's, it would be a pretty easy switch, the coverages are relatively the same. To go on on some of the additional resources, so I mentioned the Preferred Priority, that is their kind of comprehensive remediation program. So what we do is pre-storm preparation, your loss control representative will meet with you, go over disaster preparedness guide, and then we'll do the property appraisal as well. So every five years, you get a property appraisal that's done by a third company, third-party company. And basically, the idea is to have, replace the cost values and up to the insurance money so that if an event will occur, we're, we've got enough insurance to replace this building to current standards. So that's all kind of pre-storm stuff. During the storm, we've got boots on the ground, ready to go, and then they're also there for the claim to close out. So everything's done, and documentation that supports your FEMA assistance. So it's kind of a three-part, there's three parties involved for a natural disaster, or really any property loss. So Preferred Priority Program consists of PGCS, which is the claim administrator for the trust, Anglo-Martin, which is the third-party adjuster, they're your boots in the ground during the adjusting for the claim, and then Blue Sky, that's an option that you can use, their disaster remediation company. They've got global resources, and what they do is, they basically place themselves outside of the cone of the storm. So as it starts blowing, they're here, they're available, they've got dehumidifiers, generators, any sort of resource that you need, they're here to help respond. And they've basically been vetted by the insurance program already, and they will pay them directly on your behalf outside of the deductible. So it's a very streamlined process, and the goal is to basically get the city back up and running and holding, and to get you to the point where FEMA can be closed out and, you know, that kind of way. In terms of loss controls, these are some additional resources that are available, we get up to a cost. Instead of dedicated loss control, there's also cybersecurity resources, there's an HR hotline, gets you point of line for unlimited use, there's ADA website compliance, Vector Solutions is an online training program you can have access to, and then we have our Preferred Tips program. So this is that $5,000 matching grant, so every policy period, this is available to you. It can be used for anything that is safety or loss control related. If you have to install ADA compliant railways or PPE for employees, anything that really can mitigate a claim, this would, could go towards. So it's a matching grant, you spend a total of $10,000, you get $5,000 back. So it really kind of takes a focus on pre-loss, loss control, and making sure that, you know, we're managing risk for the city. That for now, any questions?
Council? Yes, Mr. Mayor.
I think we ought to lock the door and not let you out of here until we sign the policy.
I appreciate that.
Good job, Kyle.
If you could tell us a little bit about how these additional services work, and at what cost?
So, in terms of the loss, say, what hurricane loss, there's going to be no additional cost to use these services. They're going to use exact amount when it comes to rating the loss, and that all gets done by the adjusters, and that gets sent to the claims administrator, and they determine the value of the loss. But there's no separate fee for using that.
So who pays for them?
That's part of your insurance company.
So do they get a portion of recovery, or?
So these are the people actually doing the work, so if the windows blow out in this building, you have to get that fixed, there's a bill associated with that, where they're able to come and fix it. So they're just pre-contracted vendors.
Gotcha, okay.
Yes, Mr. Roberts.
So I have a question for Kyle. So Kyle, I'm sure you've had an opportunity to compare this, so it's apples-to-apples as far as coverage?
Yes, we went, we had a meeting, we went over coverage by coverage. There were some areas, I think, you had a little bit more coverage, but in no areas were they less, or where deductibles were more. But I'd like to just kind of see it laid out again one more time for comparison.
Sure.
Outside of that, the programs, they're very comparable to FLC programs. The one thing I noted, though, was that Preferred Tips, it's similar to the FLC CQ grant program, but currently, we only get matching grant of $1,500. So if we spent $1,500, we give $1,500 back per, per, they separate into two divisions, so if you compare it to this, it's only $3,000 versus $5,000, so we can, we have an opportunity to get more money back with their program. Well, like I said, everything, I didn't see anything that was significantly different as far as, but very accountable to the FLC.
Okay, great. Did you have a chance to talk with some of the local towns down the road here, like Treasure Island, Bel Air Beach?
I would like to, I have not. I've talked to Indian Shores, the previous administrator, and they were satisfied, that was last year.
Okay.
But I'd like to follow up with some preference policy.
Very good.
What's the effective date of the new policy?
It would be within fiscal year, so October 1st.
So does that mean until October 1st, we have no coverage for this building?
No, we're covered until September 30th.
Forgive me, I thought part of-
The wind, so, how do you feel about that?
Oh, the winds.
Yes.
We do have a separate wind policy for this building.
Oh, we do?
Yes.
So how much is the premium for that?
Uh, I want to see, $3,500 roughly, I have to check my numbers.
Okay, so it's not significant, but that's an additional cost differential?
Yes. I don't know if that was, um, bought as something on insurance at one point, and our wind cover dropped off, I don't, I wasn't aware. I knew we had managed insurance on the building through the separate policy, but I wasn't aware that we did not have coverage on all those assets throughout the city.
It's almost a $13,000 reduction. I would like to know how FMIT, what they would have to say about that, because it's, that's a dramatic difference, considering what, whoever wants, policies are going up, I'm really surprised not questioning you at all, but they're either, I mean, I don't think, they're not supposed to be a for-profit organization, right?
No, both companies are operated, I think they're actually filed as public entities themselves.
You think it's the number of cities, communities they have, and the number of the claims that they have, that's made their rates become higher than yours are?
Yeah, so last year was tough, I mean, nobody's moved from the rate increases last year with what the property market in Florida. They just had to push rate where they had to. We didn't push rate at, so we definitely pushed rate from the Preferred Governmental Insurance Trust, but not to, to make sure that we saw out there with other carriers.
Okay. And you said you had roughly, just with the 70 communities that you're covering here?
Yes, we had 200 public entities, or local governments, and that comprised of cities, towns, villages, about 70 municipalities, we have 22 counties, handful of school boards, a lot of special districts.
Okay.
Now, the trust itself, so that's me as a broker, the trust itself, Preferred, I think they have roughly 400 members, over 400.
Okay.
FMIT is larger than us, they've been around since '70s or '80s. Preferred's been around since 2000, 2001. But yeah, so they've, they've gotten a little bit less than what FMIT does now in terms of total membership.
All right. I'm not opposed to switching, provided that our, our neighbors that are also wanting the same, it's something that we'd like to discuss further. And then obviously, we have to take it to a vote, but how does everyone else feel?
I have a few more questions, by the way.
Sure.
Oh, one is, what is the rating for Preferred?
The rating?
Yeah.
So they're not rated because they're a public trust, but they are backed by access insurance, same way FMIT is, they're backed by access carriers, and all of the access carriers are rated A- or better. I don't have that with me, but you do have access to that, to provide.
And you said that's the same as our current carrier?
They are bringing the same rate for us. They're not rated by A and S, but they're backed by access insurance.
And is this a claims made or occurrence policy?
This would be occurrence. Everything but, well, properties on occurrence, so that, that limit reloads every storm. And then our officials and our general liability are on occurrence forms as well, so it'd be a transition.
And what do we have currently?
Should be occurrence form.
Do you know, do you know that?
I don't, I don't work in policy.
The reason why I'm asking is I'm trying to decide if we need any kind of tail coverage? Okay.
We've done this transition multiple times through FMIT and Pidget, and the way that we quota it on occurrence form, we would be concealed.
Right. Another issue is that cybersecurity is obviously a growing risk and, and a big one, so you indicated that some extra services are available for that?
So yes, the insurance is backed by AccessXcel, everyone from your cyber insurance providers, that's our access carrier. We actually provide a $2 million dollar limit within our program, I think you only have a million right now, so there is a little bit more coverage. And then the resources that you're allowed through AccessXcel, there's tabletop exercises, there's, you know, pre-claim stuff you can do, and there's also the full response, group response, they are top-notch.
Do you offer training for, like, staff?
Yeah.
I would recommend that, Kyle, it's something you might want to look at.
There is a requirement this year for cybersecurity attorney that we have to fulfill those on one of the statutes.
Good, good, good. With regard to our current coverage, how much of that increase might be related to attorney fees?
Well, like I said, if you look at the quotes from last year to this year, most of them, they went up in general liability insurance coverage. I don't know how that's directly related, they didn't break it down any further, but if you compare it to last year, where we saw it all across the board, property increases. So, from what I understand, our workers' comp actually went up slightly, our premium, but our track record for the past five years, we should be on a negative, so I don't know why there continued increase of it.
Okay. Good to know. I thought that the Florida League of Cities was more than an insurance company. Do I understand that correctly?
That's correct.
So are there services from it that we would not be receiving if we changed carriers?
No, I don't, I believe that's not the case. FMIT is completely separate.
They, so there's distinct entities, but it's kind of like two sides of the house, just like you have, if you're Verizon, right, there's Verizon Wireless and Verizon Lightning. FMIT is its own entity, that is the insurance pool. The Florida League of Cities has an association of cities for lobbying, educational purposes is, it's distinct, they could sort of exist within an umbrella, but they're distinct. And so in things like the Florida League of Cities Annual Conference, the educational materials, their continuing education, member services and training, that's distinct from the policy.
All right, very good.
And we would not be penalized if we dropped this insurance in any of those other areas?
I see no reason why, there's plenty, there's plenty of cities and elected officials who participate, or from Pidget, or Geico, or other city, you know, who are insured in other ways. Obviously, from the Florida League of Cities perspective, they always love to get everybody on both sides.
Yeah.
But that's their thing, for your purposes, you are free to associate and contract as you see fit for your community.
Thank you. Any other questions? So, logistically, Kyle, how would it work for you with regards to timing, anything we needed to vote on so that you could make the transition?
I'd like to follow up with some of the questions we talked about, and then bring it to the September meeting.
Okay.
And what's the timetable for making a transition usually?
We just need signed paper before 10:00?
Okay.
Okay.
There's, there's not a drop date on whenever our insurance expires versus whenever it picks up. We say anytime, but that's not really the case, we're, we're him hauling around about until late December.
Well, so anytime ahead of 10:00, so your current coverage expires at 9:30 at midnight, ours will pick up 10:01, 12:00 AM, just long as we have a line order before 9:30, you'll be, you'll go.
Okay, so it would possibly be the next meeting or a special meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
I plan on September's meeting, but we do actually have the second budget.
I hope we do that.
I hope so.
All right, it would be nice to hear your findings and your answer before we ask.
Okay.
Any other questions for Kyle? This Kyle, not that Kyle.
Does it, does it include flood insurance?
No, that is separate, it's always been separate. So we have a policy through National Flood Insurance Program for this building, the house next door, and the detached garage.
So it's separate. And it would provide access flood insurance, so above NFIB, there are recoveries in there for me, I think there's a form that I don't have, I don't have it built in. So anything that's not in the flood zone, which I think everything is, but that would be subject to safer flood, and in NFIB, we set access, so you pay in addition to whatever the losses below that amount.
Very good.
All right. Okay, thank you, Mr. Stokoe, appreciate you coming here tonight. Thank you for the enlightening presentation. All right, now we are on to item three, which is, this is a discussion of permit VR BLD-23-00108 issued for 105 8th Street. Mr. Bankard, can you add a word?
Yes, I'm going to try to put this in the best order I can, but earlier this year, when that permit was issued, the number of residents contacted, and I fully explained that council told us, the attorney, Big Brother was the reason for this permit, not the city or the county, and noted who Big Brother was, it's the federal government. This position did not go well with the residents for a few reasons, and as I actually pointed out, code violations found in our Bel Air Beach ordinances. Their argument was, we should have resurfaced this permit ourselves and took the appropriate steps with our code. Originally, a board adjustment hearing was set for this matter, which would have reviewed the code, granted the variance, or denied the permit, requests with explanations of denial, et cetera, on this matter. To my knowledge, along with the residents, this was canceled. Any denial from the Board of Adjustments has an appeal process, which would have been upheld at by the court, or sent back to the city for modifications or approval. Our Code 94-291, under definitions, the name or this definition of this device at 105 8th Street has been questioned from antenna by some, and towered by others. So as our forefathers wrote this code, they defined what tower it is. Tower means any structure that is designed and constructed primarily for the purposes of supporting one or more antennas. 105 has an antenna on top of the tower. There should be no question this is the tower. Section 94-292, purpose, the goal of this article is to encourage the location of towers in non-residential areas. 105 8th Street is a residential area. Code 94-294, antennas, so noted our code allows antennas with specifics existing buildings, light poles for supporting existing structures. 105 had an antenna for years, I've been here 10 years, I remember there, they had a fabric antenna in the house years ago. The owner then took that down, relocated, rented his home, and then moved back, and now we have this antenna on a tower. Although under Code 294, it further notes antennas and related equipment as visually as gruesome as possible. This tower sticks out like a sore thumb noticeable from A Street and back to 9th Street, along with the siding yards. Any potential buyer, and I want to emphasize this, or nearby this home, would surely notice this tower, which could affect the pricing of potential homes nearby. This section further notes the goal of this article is to encourage the location of towers in non-residential areas, and to minimize the total number of towers. Six, section 94-249, 294, antennas, notes none should be more than six feet in height of the existing structure. The antenna in question far exceeds, but more importantly, not on the existing structure. Code 94-295, towers in our city must have an institutional zoning classification. For the record, an institutional zone means use within the lines of or on property. For the record, an institutional zone means use within the lines of or on property necessary for the operation of buildings such as hospitals, schools, libraries, auditoriums, and all this complex. 105 does not fall into this category. Under 94-294, surrogacy bond was to be posted on this site, on this bond, on this permit. I don't know whether it was posted. 294-296, tower shall be setback from the existing residential or commercial use. The distance equals 1.3 times the height of the tower. So this tower should be 52 feet from the existing structures. The engineer plans submitted shows seven foot eight inches. 94-297 notes towers must conform with Building Codes and Electronic Industries Association. Now this needs to be changed tonight, or the EI, it's classified in our code. This organization was dissolved under about 2007, and Florida replaced the East Industry Standards with the Telecommunication Industry Association, now known as the TIA. So I contacted the TIA. David Harkins, who is currently the vice chair of the TIA Committee, which is responsible for producing ASC TIA dash 222 dash 1 standards, which governs the design and analysis of communication towers. He also has a structural engineering firm that provides structural analyst services to communication tower industry. I asked him about the tower and the manufacturer rating at 70 miles per hour to be beat up to 135 miles per hour. Mr. Harkins noted that ASC TIA dash 222 dash 1 standard is appropriate standard for evaluating the tower. The ASC seven standard determines the minimum required design wind speed for different regions of the country. Mr. Harkins pointed out, to install a reference tower that has a manufacturer rating at 70 miles per hour at a location that requires 135 miles per hour, just to note that's what the county requires this one to be, when load capacity, then you would have the option that for the manufacturer to provide you with a professional engineering and CO analyst showing how the tower would need to be modified to meet the 135 mile per hour requirement. If the manufacturer is not able to provide that service, then I recommend you engage a structural engineering firm with the tower expertise to perform the analysis and modification plans for you. Further says, if you have an independent engineer providing you with a PDCL code compliant modification to the tower to meet the required wind speed, then the manufacturers do not necessarily have to agree to the modifications. But he notes, however, modifications done to the tower without the manufacturer agreement may likely void any warranty you have with the tower. I suggest you have a conversation with the manufacturer to fully understand your options and restrictions. One of the many reasons I contacted the TIA was because the retailer distributor emailed me, I received when I posed as a potential buyer of the tower in my community that requires 135 mile an hour rate. Well, I received a voicemail from Joe Gunn, the tower distributor. I asked if I could get something in writing. And I emphasized that I needed it to be approved to 135 mile an hour wind gust. So he went back to the manufacturer and he sent me an email on August 1st, 2024, 9:45 AM. "Good morning, Frank." "Yes, sir, Illumina does not have a tower option that is rated for 135 mile an hour wind rate, gust or sustain. There is a possible option of having a tower attached to a building. This would use the building brackets, so the tower would be attached to the building in a concrete slab at the base. You would need to have a third party come out to the property, do an analyst, to see if this could pass the 135 mile an hour wind rate. I have been told that this option usually costs around $2,500. I can get you the info on how to proceed with this, if you like. However, there is no guarantee that the analysts will come back showing that the tower can be rated at 135 mile an hour winds. Let me know if you have any questions. Gabe Zulolo, Joe Gunn, Antenna Company." Returning to our codes, 94-300, maintenance and inspection, notes if a tower or an antenna is subject to Class 1 to 5 hurricane, as defined by the U.S. Weather Service, or major tropical storm with winds excessive 75 miles an hour. Each tower so affected shall be inspected for the structural damage reported shall be filed within the city. We just experienced two weeks ago hurricane that, when that passed us, it was rated at a Category 1 with wind gusts of over 80 miles an hour. I don't know if there was an inspection done on this tower. After a meeting with the concerned residents on this matter and then providing me with these code infractions, I reached out to Senator Scott, Senator Rubio's office. Both gave me a license, we had some networks we're dealing with the FCC. They both asked me for our codes along with any memorandums we received. They then took this, they then put both of this to the senators' general councils and arranged a meeting with the FCC on this matter. July 9th, 2024 FCC meeting, those attending were Rebecca Brown, FCC counsel, Jack Hinkins, Senator Scott's general counsel, Clayton Stein, Senator Scott's office, and Peyton Ross, Senator Rubio's legislative assistants. FCC put on the record that they are an administration agency, not a state, county, town enforcement agency. They further noted the information sent to the senators' office were reviewed by them and noted the following. The courts have the final say in the situation at hand if a town or city refuses to allow a ham radio antenna tower in a particular municipality. It was further noted that council of FCC would not give legal advice with Beller Beach Codes or ordinances we submitted. They further noted FCC would not give guidance to allow or not allow a tower. That ability falls backhand to the state municipalities. Although they did indicate simple passport challenges that benefited one or the other parties, or noted both, or can be found in the courts. And they emphasized this, they said, "Does the tower cause a possible unsafe situation? Can it cause harm if fallen or collapsed to a nearby neighbor? As noted, if the tower is erected on a property but falls or collapses on a near, not near any structure, and still on the owner's property, then this could be considered safe." I noted EB situation with less than 10 feet from each other's residents where the tower was, FCC would not give a position on that. Then the other thing they noted was, "Does the structure reduce property now?", which I put in there about our code. And this is what they're saying, the property value is, to the property or near the property that has the tower. Since this tower impacts nearby residents, as in the above, I would say, yes, the FCC would not comment, but note this situation. If safety is not the matter, they emphasize, and just the denial from the municipality of its code, not allowing for aesthetics or other matters, were reasonable accommodations given to the applicant for a permit to erect the structures? Examples again, agreeing the tower to be lowered when not in use, tower not to be erected overnight or certain hours, tower to be conformed with all safety structures on erected guide wires or joke that are on this tower right now, when storms are forecasted, tower not to be put in use. These given examples which courts found to be reasonable to accommodate, simply if accommodations were agreed, then the applicant of the permit would need to comply. FCC noted, sometimes these reasonable accommodations to pursue are met with strong pushback from the applicant and end up in court. It was noted when a city or town tries to work it out, the courts very seldom go with the applicant's free usage position. This meeting, while all were very cordial, noted Big Brother was not the culprit for reason this was approved, the lack of enforcing our codes and possibly going to the court if 105 challenged the permit denial, or more importantly, the items noted as reasonable. To conclude, while the FCC was calling from Washington, it was further noted that the courts in our area most probably would be the best to understand the elements of our area and make the correct decision. In the permit application, it says, and the owner's affidavit, it so notes on number nine, "I agree that as the party legally and financially responsible for this proposed construction activity, I will abide by all applicable laws and requirements of the government, owners, builders, as well as employers. I understand that its construction must comply with all applicable laws, ordinances, building codes, and zoning regulations." That's in his affidavit signed by the applicant. Even with the county issuing a permit conforming with wind, the owner has sworn to comply with number nine of the owner's affidavit, therefore this should have been going back to the Board of Justice for a hearing to conform to our ordinances and zoning before a permit was issued. Florida Building Code 31, section 3108, telecommunication, telecommunications, broadcast towers. Towers should be located, the 3108 dash two, location actions, towers should be located such that guide wires and other accessories shall not cross or encroach upon any streets or other public space or over, or over above ground electric utility lines or encroach any private property surrounding the tower. If you look at the tower, they have guideline, guide wires hanging off of it tied to a plastic fence that were on a neighbor's property. Should this permit be revoked? Under Florida Building Statute 53.79, the enforcing agency is empowered to revoke any such permit upon a determination by the agency that the construction, erection, alteration, modification, repair, or demolition of the building for which the permit was issued is in violation of or not conforming with the provisions of the Florida Building Code. Today, August 19th, I spoke with Tony Ruffini today, the engineer that submitted his seal for the tower. I noticed speaking with the retailer, Joe Gunn, of the tower, that the manufacturer would agree if guide wires were installed properly, it would be rated up to 90 miles per hour. Mr. Ruffini, please listen to this one, Mr. Ruffini asked, "Doesn't this tower fold up and able to be laid down?" I said, "Yes." He said that the last time he spoke to the manufacturer, all that was needed was to write a note that it would be taken down in the event of a windstorm. Mr. Ruffini noted, but would not put in the note, it would be taken down by order. Mr. Ruffini said, simply, "Who would enforce this? Simply, the idea that you would lower it should get this passed." I then asked about the 135 mile rate, and can I get it certified for that? He said he could do some structural analyst on this and come up with a rating for that, for about that wind speed. I then asked, "Would that conform with TIA standards?" He asked what that was. I noted Florida recognizes Telecommunication Industry Association and its needs to meet ASC TIA dash 222 dash 1. He noted that he was not aware of that standard. I further noted, "This will be a concrete base." He noted that would need a separate engineering approval. I said, "That standard was a main concern for me when I was reading the code of the TIA dash 222." He then said that only the manufacturer has the data to make the changes to the structure. Mr. Ruffini said, "I don't want to go to that avenue." I said, "One of my main concerns is who is liable of an accident or worse, someone gets hurt from this. Since you will be certifying it, are you liable?" And Mr. Ruffini was clear, "He is never liable." I said, "What if it comes down and comes apart? We get winds of more than 100 miles an hour." Mr. Ruffini said, "Again, he is not liable." He said, "I am sure it would not fly apart, probably just bend." Mr. Ruffini believes that my homeowner's insurance would be liable. I asked, "Would I have to get a rider on this?" He said, "I am not telling you to do that." He noted that he would have to look at your insurance policy, that would note that this is a louder prohibitions, but most of them are probably silent ones. So I asked about the cost, and after I get this set up, about having him come out to inspect it and certify it, he noted that in Florida, he doesn't need to go out and do a physical inspection, and his office is pretty far from you. Florida simply accepts picture. He said, "Submit a letter that you will take down the tower during a windstorm. If you have issues, let me know." The call lasted 24 and a half minutes. He was calling back from his Colorado office. I do want to note that RES Engineering specializes in the following engineering per the website: foundation, framing, design, and repair, permit packages, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, grading, and retaining walls, building designs, drafting services, nothing about towers. So he's not complying with the TIA requirements that he's an expert or an engineer in these towers. So simply, this tower was erected permitting, and I went to the county about this, they don't want to talk to me when I'm producing evidence. And this thing should be pulled, this thing was a joke, this thing was not by Big Brother, it was not handled by our codes. Our codes are specific, we're going to go through the codes tonight. If somebody yells at us or threatens to sue us, if we're not going to enforce our codes, why are you going to happen?
All right. I appreciate you gathering all that information and reading it verbatim to us. Now, what I would ask is, may we all have a copy so that we can digest this and then bring this back to the next work session.
Thank you.
I think that that's only fair enough, this is way too much information for us to digest instantly.
I agree.
Mr. Moore? Do you have any comments on this before we table this?
I'd like to thank the council member for his diligence and engagement in this issue. Last year in March, I provided a memorandum sort of setting forth the legal framework. I think that is still consistent with where we're at. I'd like the opportunity, just as the council members wish some time to digest, I'd like to make sure, I'm always willing to take new information or information that I've seen in the past and reevaluate my position and see if there's meaningful reason to change that. And so, without saying more, that's where I stand now. The council members clearly put a great deal of time into researching this issue, and I want to make sure that his efforts are met with an equally diligent response rather than off the top of my head. Here's what I'm thinking, feeling, initial impressions.
Fair enough, my thoughts exactly. Would anyone else like to comment before we move on? Again, thank you, Mr. Banker. All right, now we are on to item number two's discussion and review of recommended code changes. Mr. Raifler, you have it for?
Thank you, Mayor. So we're going to start with chapter 10, and this is in our current code format with strike through and underline recommendations. We're going to move through chapter 10 in order up to chapter 94. The idea is to talk about what the changes are, what would be the reason behind these proposed changes, and see if the council's comfortable with what we're regulating, or if there's some kind of tweak, or maybe something that we're not thinking of that needs to be addressed. So I'm going to have Louis Serna walk us through the code chapters, and then I will chime in with some of the reasons why I touched on, or I asked him to review and cover recommendations as we move through.
Sir, for the record, can you say your name one more time?
Oh, yes. It's Louis Serna with Calviger Anonymous Associates.
And can you spell your last name, please?
S-E-R-N-A.
All right, thank you, sir.
And everybody calls me Louis, but... Very good. Yeah, so we've got a lot of changes, we'll walk through some of these. Most of the changes are in chapter 94. You'll see some highlights, some different colors, and I'll try to explain what some of those are as we go through. First change, we'll start with chapter 10. First change is 10 dash 3 coastal construction control line. That's stricken, and we tried to put some notes in there that wouldn't be stricken, but it's not being deleted, it's just being moved to chapter 94. And we can go over that when we get to 94.
We missed one change on page one.
Oh, did we miss one?
Yeah, the time for construction.
Ah, yeah. That's important.
So this is changing, currently we're at seven AM to six PM Monday through Saturday are our days besides holidays for construction and work. It's been recommended to me by several residents to consider moving it to eight AM start as close to seven AM. It's been brought up that landscaping companies on different streets tend to not start late anyways because they're used to those policies elsewhere.
Can I make a recommendation? Every time we discuss a new change, whatever the change is, just raise your hand if you, if you don't like something. If everybody agrees with the change that's inserted, then we'll just review it and nod our heads and keep moving. Are we good with that?
Yeah, that eight o'clock change, like landscaping, pile driving, now it's music makers. When they were driving a pile around here, I mean, they were hitting that monkey at eight o'clock or seven o'clock in the morning, six fifty-five, you'd hear it coming down.
So is that a hit, not?
Well, I liked it, but I was up.
All right.
But I had a lot of people complaining about it.
Got you.
Yeah, I read somewhere else about if the homeowner was mowing their grass, it would be seven.
Yeah, let's further on down in section ten. Yeah, we'll get to that.
Okay, yeah. And I think that was Monday through, or Sunday through Saturday.
So aren't they included in homeowner, like when you're talking about mowing? Because you're not supposed to have a landscaping where you're doing certain things.
Falls under noise then.
Oh, right. Yes. Okay.
But yeah, I just, I didn't miss a clock there in section ten dash two. And then ten dash three is coastal construction control line. That's just being moved. Scrolling down, this is where we get to time limits of permits. This is with discussion of Mon Cal based on their experience. There was a standard eighteen month time limit on permit. Based on our research, that's, that's a long time. That's took, that's longer than most communities allow for permits. So we broke it up by remodels, and other pools, other permits, and value. Do you have any questions on this?
I thought this was a very good change. My question is, is it realistic in the sense that it seems like everybody's construction project runs long? And is that a matter of people just having to do better contracting or?
For Florida.
You know, what happens to people in the meantime?
I find the one issue is with the new home builds. Those are the ones that can get delayed with materials, just getting, you know, different specialists coming in to finish the trades. When it comes to small things like remodels, I think this is completely reasonable for what I see turned around, especially pools. Just note that there is some room for extensions with built-in. So in different situations, if there's a reasonable cause to why the project's not complete, it does, it's similar to the new home builds, it gives me some, some power to, to extend the permit if it's valid.
Is that subject to?
Before we get to a hearing.
Is that subject to an additional fee or just?
It is not, it just has to be a written request.
All right.
So currently, right now, we have eighteen months. When a house comes up on that, I notify them through a letter, you're coming up on eighteen months. Do you need an extension? You need to notify me in writing with a large project, you know, grant an extension. But after that, you know, there are two years and then it's the process, the code enforcement process where we have to take them to a hearing and get a calendar, a timeline set for completion.
And the section on the screen is the, this is where the extensions are discussed. And again, it's based on value type of permit. All right, ten dash, ten dash thirty-six, we added seven third area MD about dumpsters, limitation on those. Apparently that's been a problem as well. Okay, the next, ten dash forty, that was a recommendation for deletion by Florida Department of Emergency Management. So for consistency with the state model ordinance on dealing with flood regulations. And same with section ten dash forty-one. And same with ten dash forty-two. Looks like the next change deals with.
Ten seventy-four.
Ten dash seventy-four, yes.
Twelve.
And yeah, we just added what qualifies as a appropriate garbage disposal container, what doesn't, and what doesn't qualify. So a bag or a cardboard box would not comply as an adequate container for rubbish.
That's best, that could be a problem because a lot of these people do lawn work or like that and put it in big black bags. So I understand as you, those rubbish and garbage would, how do you know unless you rip the bag open?
I can tell you, they place it the night before and it's ripped all the shreds.
Yeah, well, it'd be a good indication.
There's a good indicator right there that they use that they put food in a, in a plastic bag. I admit that I occasionally I have, I have overload, so I put them in plastic bags, but I put them out right before the service comes.
I guess that's a better way.
Now, would you?
Yeah.
Anyone else on this one?
Louis, continue. Yes. All right, ten dash seventy-seven, this deals with parking material, upstream parking spaces. It allows the use of permeable materials. Loose surfaces such as gravel, crush shells, shall require some method of containment. So this just allows you a little bit, little bit of flexibility of what you can, what qualifies as appropriate parking material.
I thought this was a very good change and it's more consistent with encouraging permeable material.
And this is for, this is for the parking, correct?
Yes.
Drive away. So I'm not opposed to this at all. However, I think that there should be a provision in there that it's your responsibility to contain that material because crush shell, gravel, things like that are going to get caught in the tread of the tires and basically you're going to have debris in front of your house in the street. And so who's responsible for cleaning it up? Probably just not a bad idea to consider that. I don't know.
The, the language does say loose surfaces such as gravel or crush shell shall require some method of containment such as a four-inch thick and four-inch wide border material.
Well, it would be contained until it's in the tread of the tires.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
And it's leaking. We have a street sweeping service every so often, but just something to consider. I know that my, my car collects everything, so.
Yes. Was this language taken from?
From city, not even.
Okay, so that's worth the point. I think it is a great thing overall. Clearly the GeoWeb and the TurfLog, that's self-containing in itself. You put shells and gravel over that. So I think it is a good thing that we included some type of perimeter, that if we just have gravel and/or shell, that's going to somewhat contain it a little bit. I know one time I had a citizen, this was before this language was put in, so I think she's probably very happy now because she had a gravel and/or shell driveway. And I think she was fine or threatened to be fine before this was in there because her code didn't support that. So this is good.
Yeah, and it prevents, you know, expanse, expanses of shell material or gravel and kind of creating, who knows where you're parking in.
Right.
So it kind of finds the areas.
Right.
Yeah, that's good. Just want to make it, there's a couple of our residents are here specifically on this issue, but we just want to get them out.
Sure.
Would you like to speak, sir, on this topic?
Does that sound like there's much objection that I need to?
Yeah, well, use your, use your.
That was just a way, just appreciate the, so I have my mark on that point one forty page over on the corner there, page four twenty-second. So we've got quite extensive, the previous one, quite extensive shells and so the ability to work together with the city and so we can be, not have to put down expensive, you know, surface equipment. I think it's appreciated, so anything we can do to compromise, we have to put in containment or whatever, here's a lot of utilized. So it's, it's. Despite what you may have heard, we are actually pretty reasonable.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming tonight.
Yeah, I think the next change is on chapter one-two.
So you moved the southern pools, chapter ten to chapter ninety-four. That was on the.
Okay, yeah. The chapter starts, chapter maybe like there is going to, chapter ninety-four. What's the number?
Twenty-two, thirty-three.
Page thirty. Yes.
Almost there.
They had thirty-five, we feel it hit.
Yeah, right there.
Yeah, basketball hoops, adding those as an exemption, they are allowed as long as they're maintained and good repair. They're exempt from being in the front yard. I think we're going to add some language in there that they shall not be in the right of the way also.
Should there be something about maybe they need to be taken down in a storm event or if not, do they, maybe they need to have some sort of wind something or another anchored properly? I don't really know. But the last thing you want is one of those things flying down the street and crashing into someone's car or their front lane down.
Also, is there a distinction between the portable basketball hoops versus permanently fixed ones?
Children's toys is so vague. What you're saying about the trampolines?
Well, that's true.
Yeah.
Well, it's, it's stating they can't be out in the yard for more than twenty-four hours. The only thing that we're seeing right now that is allowed according to this is basketball hoops.
So you have one of them jumping, you only talk about the trampolines, they have to take it in every night.
I don't, I haven't seen that before. I haven't, I'm not sure, I'm not sure about that.
I would say yes.
These days with our insurance, they have a lot of money if they have a trampoline.
Yeah, well, you're supposed to notify.
Yeah.
That's a big, big no-no, you know?
I, I think it would probably fall under that category as a toy, I don't know.
I would say that once this comes to you in the form of an ordinance as we're work sessioning, and I appreciate the note, and I think that the member, member banker's commentary concerning vagueness is well placed and we can look to improving that language, perhaps to include, you know, toys and recreational devices such as, but not limited to, and that sort of thing, to, to give some, some clarity to that as we draft. So I think that's a note well taken so that we avoid some kind of vagueness challenge later.
Great.
Back, back to the basketball hoops, however, it looks as though the lead-in language relates to other portable items that aren't part of the natural landscaping. So by this exception, it seems that we're accepting the portable basketball hoops. I don't know that I like those sitting around. They, they tend to deteriorate quickly, they look bad quickly.
You know, like the five cinder blocks on top of them?
That, that too, that too.
I can tell you another community on the mainland recently went through extensive hearings on language amending their land development code related to portable or otherwise basketball hoops. And we can look to some of how that discourse went to inform what, you know, a draft presented to you in final form can look like.
All right. Thank you. Thank you.
My only challenge is going to be, you might be able to define it as a weight scenario and most of them have, the ones I'm envisioning, the ones that I've had are my daughter's. The bottom portion of it you could fill with water, sand combination, and it was extremely heavy. So maybe with, I don't know what type of language the other cities put in there, but it was very, very heavy, highly unlikely the wind's going to pick that up. Something to think about. Thank you.
Thanks. Twenty-eight, thirty-eight.
Yes.
That's good.
This deals with millerings. First part of that is just removing the specific fee amount and just adding that it would be addressed by resolution. We did that in a lot of other sections. All right, based on the discussions we had, the previous work sessions, we deleted the part about yelling, shouting, et cetera. I think there was some concern about that language. In its place, we did, Kyle and I discussed boat and vehicle noises. Well, actually, no, this was, this was a little different than what we discussed, but this just adds boat and vehicle noise, use of any boat or vehicle without a muffler or the operation which causes a loud and raucous noise. And then we added further below, boat motors out of the water. So if you're operating your boat in your driveway, flushing it out, there's time limits when you can do that. That's per about twelve. And then we changed heat to eight, eight AM. Just to be consistent with other activities. And this also, this, this is a section that deals with pile driver, pile drivers and steam shovels and things like that.
Can you refresh our memory as to the problem with the yelling? I mean, I know there's like free speech, speech issues, but does that come under another provision somewhere?
Yeah, as I recall, there was just some, it was just sort of, wasn't sure how you would enforce that.
I, I think I can speak to, I'm sorry, Mr. Serna. Apology. Apologies for the interruption, but I think I can speak to this a little more as it's less of a planner's concern and more of a city attorney's concern. In reviewing this, and I've already presented this comment to Mr. Seren and Kyle as well, I can tell you that I think we should have the discussion broadly around this, around the noise section, to see if you have any issues with the revisions presented. But this is likely to be substantially revised. There's some more recent jurisprudence on challenges to noise ordinances, on vagueness, and better articulating the plainly audible standard. So like yelling would really subject you to a void for vagueness challenge. How do I know what you consider, you know, what officer so-and-so considers yelling may be just, you know, animated to the next one? And so it doesn't provide consistency and clear expectations. And so with noise ordinances, there's been some more recent jurisprudence, some of which I've litigated in the last year and a half. Some ordinances that have been struck down, and some of our language here needs to provide, I think, some better objective criteria, like plainly audible from X feet. And while there is some reference to defining the terms loud and ruckus, I think more can be done to tighten this up.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, I agree with that, definitely.
All right, I think the next change is in chapter, oh, wait.
And while he's looking at that, I would also say we also need to review for just sort of RV Gilbert, those same concerns that come up in sign codes, come up here. If you have sounds for political campaigns versus sounds for music, or rock music is mine, or rap music is not, you guys don't have that. But we need to make sure we carefully go through this and make sure we don't have anything that could be interpreted as, you know, content-based restrictions.
Understood, thank you.
Okay, section 22, 62, we deleted what is unnecessary language. It just allows you, if you're the owner, to conduct maintenance on your property and landscaping between the hours of 7:00 and 6:00 PM.
Yes, Mr. Ror.
That's what I was referring to earlier, was there a reason we would let the homeowner start mowing at 7:00 as opposed to a landscaper person?
Yeah, that's, I guess that's just to allow the owner to do it. That's in the existing code that the owner is allowed to do at that time. Well, actually, we could change that page as well, I guess.
I think it might make sense.
That makes more sense.
That way my wife can't tell me to get up at 6:00 to mow.
There you go.
And you know what, in the 6:00 PM part, I know sometimes, like, well, it's really hot now. It is preferable, if I'm going to mow in the afternoon, to, you know, start mowing a little bit later. I don't know what you guys think about that. It's not like I don't.
I don't have a problem, I don't have a problem. I'm mowing till 8:00 o'clock.
Eight days.
Because it's too hot in the summer.
Yeah.
Everything's wet in the mornings. My thoughts, everyone agree?
Agreed.
Frank, are you going to have landscapers?
Well, I don't think I'm going to.
No, this is just homeowners.
Yeah, I don't have a problem.
So it's 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM.
Yeah.
And the landscapers?
Right. Because they make a lot more noise.
Well, you've got to take that.
All right, chapter 30. This is where we did some moving, let's see, dock seawalls and more. That's moved to chapter 94. I think that's it for chapter.
Yeah, it's really cool that many of these split topics, find it over here in this section, you find it over here in this section. It's going to be so refreshing to have it all dialed in where, okay, I want to, I want to know what I can do to my house, or what I can do to my seawall, or whatever. You go to a bloodbath for it there and all that.
Excellent.
Very cool.
All right, chapter 38. This was just a minor change about the decals. Thirty-eight dash 109. We disrupt the part about the registration address and the valid driver's license address shall match the city address of the lease property. And then, jumping to chapter 50. We move 50 dash 1, road intersection visibility in chapter 94.
Hold on a second. So what's the verification process for a renter? I see, okay, you've got a, I guess the vehicle documented in subsection A2 shows that it's registered to that address. Is that what it says?
Yeah, this is the vehicle is registered to the applicant. They have the valid lease. It's really that they have the, at least a three-month lease that they're proving that they're actually renting. But the problem is when someone moves, say, every six months, or is, you know, like a year lease, they're not changing, I mean, they're supposed to, but they're not a lot of times. Or they're renting a place and they have a lot of other places that they own that their license is tied to. It's just, it's difficult. We run into a lot of issues with having the driver's license in that rental property, whether it's a year lease or a six-month lease. And they're still limited to, they have to have a valid driver's license, they have to have the valid vehicle registration with the lease. It's just, it seems like a little bit overkill, or it creates more of a problem where someone trying to get around the decal.
Okay, all right. And so they have an out-of-state license plate on their car, and you're going to put that plate number on the sticker, correct?
Limited to two. And, you know, again, they have to be, have a lease in their name.
So they can have an out-of-state license, they can have out-of-state registration, an out-of-state license plate, and all they need is a three-month lease, and they can buy stickers that last them an entire year.
Well, we take, if it was like that situation, we would be making a note of what the lease was and documenting. But typically, it's a Florida state license, a Florida registration. We rarely, we could change it to a valid Florida.
That would be for a vehicle registration. Yeah, I don't know, however, what feels about that?
So if they're just coming down to Florida, three months out of the year, you know, they're not going to change the driver's license or their license plate. I mean, that's Jersey, seven and a half.
Correct, yeah.
And have a state driver's license and have a state license plate. What you're saying is really not that much of a problem. So if I come in there and I get a, I have a decal, and I get it in very early, it's good for the balance of the year, but I'm only going to be here three months and I leave.
Then you're riding around the rest of the country with your new sticker.
Yeah.
Yeah, I saw a car today, I brought this up, it had a Ballard being stickered, and stopped at the light, and the tag number didn't match the tag of the car. So I'm thinking, if I sell the car and the sticker stays one.
Yeah, good question.
Yeah.
Well, but see, that's a red flag, because the police, if they're checking the stickers, it doesn't match.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, well, I don't think there's a reason why we should penalize anyone for renting in there within our initial code.
This is not a situation that happens all the time. It's probably a handful a year.
Okay.
If we see something suspicious, we'll, you know.
All right, chapter 50.
Page 82.
So, uh... Did it change?
I see it.
This is more about 50 dash 134, more about the fees. And he stands for resolution.
Another resolution for fees.
And another added note is we generally go through 50. Mr. Seren and I have changed communication on this, but we're going to, I need to review this based on some of the statutory preemptions that have been adopted, specific to our abilities to regulate within our right of way for some telecommunications infrastructure. And so we'll need to check for that, as well as that was largely preempted in the last four years.
All right, then concurrency management. The changes I made to this section really to be consistent with what Pennebys County is doing with mobility management. It really won't affect, for the most part, what you do, what you see on a day-to-day basis. You don't get that many large developments, is really what it would affect. A large, larger development, whether redeveloping, you know, how that vacant land has developed, if there was a large redevelopment, that they could go through the mobility management system. But this is what other communities have been going towards. So deleting the transportation level of service. And again, this is just our suggestion to be consistent, but you can certainly keep what you have currently. So rather than the proportioned fair share system that you have now, this switches it to a mobility management system. And it really recognizes that you also, if you were to get a major development, you really can't widen any roads to increase capacity. So it requires payment of a mobility fee.
I think it's more current, well laid out. Not, like, unbelievable to think that at some point that there may be some try to redevelop each side of the community. But to me, it lays out what the requirements would be in case that ever was something pursued.
So the new language just works better?
Yeah, I think it's more current. Does this tie into it not being a plan at all?
Yeah, it should be consistent with what you have in your comp plan. I'll definitely check that, but yeah, I think I recall checking that. It's already set up to do this this way in your comp plan. And it is, other communities are doing it, and it does work. It is working in other communities, especially on beach. All right, let's, it looks like there's some comments in here from the FDM reviewer, I think you got your notes.
She's Rebecca Quinn, she's the consultant for ordinances through FDM, so the State Flood Management Office. So I had her review, to bring her flood code chapter as up to date again. One of her major changes was, she asked me, and I went along with her recommendation, that we don't have floodways, and we never will have a floodway or a riverine flooding zone, given our geography. So we just kind of removed all that, and it's just extra required.
You're sure of what flood, flood plain management?
Yes.
Do you define flood?
I don't know, I can't define the exact.
Definitely.
I couldn't like take my test, but now. But I could point one out on a map and apply how it works. And, let's see, as we go through, she made a lot of comments to the side. This is not finalized, depending on where we end up. She'll help draft the ordinance for our alternative review.
Yeah, I reviewed the comments as well, and I think we incorporated in our version. They seem to be good comments. Definitely have to be state requirements. It's another good reason to go along with those changes.
There was one subsection where it says about tanks. And. Oh, before we get to that point, in the definitions, which is on page 118, there's a market value meeting that's redefined based on the best template right now that they currently use in the state, which gives an appraiser an exact criteria to do their critical for the flood purposes, as opposed to just saying, this is, this house is worth such, and it's certified. She made some changes for, we needed for manufactured homes or recreational vehicles, even though we don't allow them, we still needed the language. And, okay, so you get to 74, 1767. And the way it was worded in our previous ordinance was underground liquid propane tanks, it says that throughout, liquid propane tanks, but there's other types of tanks. So it is all tanks, that's why that was crossed out.
Does that work for above-ground tanks? Are there?
There are above-ground tanks, but they need to be secured, either at the flood height, the base flood elevation, or secured so that they can't drift or, you know, become missiles in the flood.
And we're not allowed any type of manufactured home day in the city? We do 74, 144. I don't know what that means. Manufacturing is defined as, see, 134. 74 dash 144. Because FEMA just came out with a whole new.
Right, I think that was part of the discussion in the past year and a half of removing that in the second first statement before, not even specific to this land overview. I believe that similar language is being required by FEMA for a flood plain view, but I could be mistaken, that's not my specialty.
Oh, they just rewrote the whole manufactured building.
Yeah, is it defining what manufactured building is?
That's people too.
You have the term manufactured building or modular building. The factory-built building is defined on page 4.
Could you pull your mic a little closer?
Apologies, Mr. Mayor. The term manufactured building is defined on page 4 of 64, which is actually page 131 of the blue, if you're looking at the blue copy. That is one place where the term manufactured building is defined. But then under dwelling therein, it does contemplate manufactured homes, which is on page 10 of the text.
Immobile houses.
So let's cross-check that, but I believe if it's a manufactured builder, so it's prefabricated and then brought in.
Well, the difference between a manufactured home, manufacturer homes meet HUD standards where a modular will meet the current building code standards of the state, which HUD meets those too, and usually comes in on a frame. Module will be set with a crane because they're coming with sessions. You'll roll, actually you'll roll a manufactured home into a foundation, set it, put it together. And you want to have a prefabbed module.
It may be that this requires additional review based on it, as this is a product of the FDM guidelines to ensure that there's no, of FDM consultant review. See if FDM has their own definition that they're operating with, with those comments.
Yeah, well, we'll double check that. I know the code does specifically prohibit mobile homes. But yeah, we'll double check the manufactured home. I thought we did it. I just wanted to be sure.
Look at FEMA's bulletin, P-85, second edition, November 2009. I don't know what the new one is, but there was some real working on buildings years ago. That's why we did all this stuff. There's, I don't know if you are familiar with LIMWA on a FEMA flood map. It's a limited wave action zone. You have A zones, which all Villarbeach is an A zone, which gives you a specific base flood elevation based on the map. There's something called B zones, which are the high-velocity zones, which have higher standards, higher requirements. You know, where you get flooding that creates waves that need, how homes build, foundations build stronger so that they don't get knocked over by all the force of the water. So the LIMWA is a limited wave action zone. It's defined now on the maps by the black line with some triangles on it. And that's a zone that's not waves over three feet in height, but from more than half to three feet. Waves that connect current with flooding, and it can cause additional damage to homes built in those zones. And the newest version of the floodability code recently adopted that all, what you call LIMWA or coastal A zones are built to B zone specifications. So we do have properties in Villarbeach that are considered coastal A zones. There is one difference. The floodability code currently allows you to have backfilled stem walls in these zones. And what's required for B zones is just built on pilings or columns. So we have breakaway walls. So our current ordinance is drafted right now to make all coastal A zones treated like a B zone, which will discontinue the use of backfilled stem walls. The benefits of this is.
It's important you said just for the A zone, not the A zone.
For the coastal A zone, so LIMWA. So the benefits of this is when you build on a backfilled stem wall, that's similar to the way this building's built. There's no storage or anything usage underneath. So it's really not a building that's elevated to where you can park your car, like walk into. It's more of just built up just enough that the foundation's secure and it's above the BFE. So there are some other communities, they gave me a list, that have done this. Villar Shores, Donut Clearwater, Indian Shore, Banera Beach, Reddington Beach, Reddington Shores, Treasure Island. Something to consider, we don't have to do it. I don't know of anyone currently, new construction that has built on stem walls in these type of zones. They usually like to go with the columns or pilings. But that is something that would benefit only because it's less floodwater diverted when you have structures that are built on the columns and breakaway walls in those zones so that it's not diverted to other structures causing war flooding. So for consideration, that is in there. Another, the other thing is if we did have commercial, it just allows commercial tri-flood proofing, which is a method that is left open to commercial zoning. It causes a lot of problems. It's hard to regulate. But again, we don't have commercial, so that would not be a change.
Does it need to be in there at all?
It doesn't.
The former thing that you said, is the point of that as an additional option?
It's an additional option that other communities have adopted. But again, we can do some more research on it. It doesn't have to be done currently. Floodability code disallows everything else. Everything has to be built to B standards, except you're allowed to build on a backfilled stem wall.
That's the only exception. Now, this is the first I've heard of this. Have you been getting many requests for it?
No.
No?
Not many people have been known of that.
What's that?
Not many people have been known to this level.
So let's think about what that would, what that would do, especially for the people down south. If they decided to rebuild, they wouldn't have to go, they wouldn't have a useless first story. Is that right?
So if they build on a backfilled stem wall, they would have a useless story, but they'd be able to achieve their BFE where they need to be with as minimal as possible elevation, just to that point.
What's that like right now?
Depends on where zone you're in. Usually about a nine or a 10. But the other option is that you build upon piles for the columns. And you're only allowed so much space. This isn't like what you see on some of the fingers where they have the garage storage and the flood vents. In LIMWA zones, you can't do that already. You have to build, like you're in a B zone, you have to have, uh, columns or piles and breakaway walls. You can only have so much square footage of enclosure. So there's already high limitations. It just, there's a small balance.
What does that do to the aesthetics of Villar Beach? Does it change anything?
I wouldn't say it changes the aesthetics at all. I think it just gives you a little bit more. For these zones, if we were to flood to a point where your elevated structures, the walls break away, that water is kind of absorbed underneath the structure, which puts it diverting to cause more flooding in other areas. So I think that's positive to that.
And this provides a more economical way of rebuilding without having to do two full stories, correct?
Are you concerned about using flood obstruction after the tax?
What's that?
Are you concerned about the bottom structure being a livable structure?
No, not necessarily. This is, I mean, it sounds to me like it would be too short to live in it. It would be really usable property. It's more of a crawl space, maybe a tall crawl space. But it's, the house, the top, the bottom story would now be off the ground. And, but you wouldn't have to build all the way up to a second story to be able to rebuild.
Almost like a split level. Almost like a split level, but the lower level is open or breakaway, right?
It wouldn't be breakaway with a stem wall. It would just be backfilled. You wouldn't be required at flood vents, but you wouldn't be able to do anything with it. It'd be like this building.
So the flood fence is just the breakaway walls?
So on a stem wall, it's just going to be backfilled. So it'll be the minimum elevation needed on block, but you can't do anything with it. So it gives you that option building just high.
So you block it and you fill it with air, and then you begin construction.
The other option is you're up on piles or columns, and you know, those are typically, you know, eight, 10 feet. And then you're allowed, you have the breakaway walls, but you can have solid enclosure. I think it's 900 square feet is the limitation.
That you can actually have storage down there? But you can't have any power, can you?
Yeah, you can't. Unless it's the electrical that's, the new water.
Right. I don't have a problem with that at all. What does everyone else think?
No, I think that, just as a general principle, keeping up with new innovations and ways to do things, as long as they're aesthetically consistent with our community standards, I think it's a good thing.
You're just elevating a slab of home, is what you're doing. Is that right?
If you watch the news, there's so many houses in Florida that just went forward, and they were taken out of flood zone this past year with this FEMA 2.0. And it just showed Debbie just wiping out somebody today or this. And now FEMA's going to come in and reevaluate them, and they're going to be back to the 15% state. You know what I'm saying? And these homes are like 10 years old, and they're all one-story homes. It's just amazing.
There's other code changes to new construction that we're reviewing also, correct? What question number are you? The one about.
Oh, the height requirement. Yeah, that's a big difference. So that's all I got for chapter 74.
What page are we on now?
Well, now we're going to be at 126, which is chapter 78.
And this is just moving that chapter to chapter 94. And then, yeah, we mean to chapter 94 where most of the changes are, where we moved everything. So a lot of these, a lot of the definitions that are added are, they're moved definitions. We did put it in the notes. Accessory structure, we did add to that definition, bird baths or columns that are not greater than four feet in height based on the input we received from Kyle. Building height, this is a new definition we added, and this is how most communities do it. You measure the building, the height of your building from your design flood elevation plus freeboard. So you don't have to have lower building if you have a higher minimum flood elevation. We added a definition of coastal construction control line, just for clarification, and coastal hazard area. Condominium, we changed, that's, you'll see that reference elsewhere, where I think the intent is really multi-family. So we changed the definition of condominium to multi-family. That'll be reordered to be alphabetical when we get to. Added a definition of the design flood elevation based on the FEMA requirements of what the city has adopted. Floor area ratio, we added just some clarification of what's not included, floor area ratio. In case there's ever a question about what counts and what doesn't count. Added, we added a definition of bizivo, and we added some language on that elsewhere. Hedge, we clarified that certain plantings can qualify as a hedge, like bamboo, arica palms, anything that's grown that functions as a hedge. So try to come up with a definition there where people are planting what's typically not a hedge plant, but if planted together, it can count.
I can assure you, it'll still be confusing.
Yeah.
Good topic of controversy.
Yeah, yeah. No, I agree.
I thought hedges were limited to six feet.
We, yeah, we touched on that. We'll get to that. We changed the definition. We changed the height requirements.
But bamboo and aricas are tall plants.
Well, you could still.
You draw the height, yeah.
Oh, okay.
We're saying they have to be eight feet, it's Thomas.
Yeah.
But it's high at eight feet above existing grave, so we still have eight feet here. Oh, I see. I'm sorry. Got it. I got it.
So what I've learned as I've lived here is that if it goes long enough unchecked, it turns into a tree.
That's true.
And a reefer. You know, that's it. So if they plant something that's a shrub or a hedge or whatever, and you don't want it to become a tree and now it's a protective, a protective species, then you want to make sure that you warn your neighbor that you're not happy with that, before it's a tree.
We added a definition of mobile home. And then the previous definition of mobile home, I think the intent there was more of a motor home or an RV or camper, so we just changed mobile home to motor home. Let's see, off-street parking. Deleted that last sentence there. I'm not sure how that, I'm not sure how that would be enforced there. We had Twitter-based per feet, which includes the access drives and maneuver areas. I'm not even sure how you measure that, so we just struck that part. We added a definition of, oh, no, actually we moved the definition of portable spa. The blue indicates where we changed, made changes to the existing definition. We changed it from that which is not currently connected to an outside water source to electrical source. Satellite antenna, that's just a move definition, same with spa. Structure, that was just copied from 10-72. Might be useful to add a definition of structure. Swimming pool, that's just a move definition. So that gets us through the definitions.
Can we take a break? It takes me five minutes. Now we're up to section 94, three, or I see where.
94-6134.
Yeah, 94-6. We changed the title of that section because there was another section that we're deleting that had that title.
I don't know what this means, for yard abutting public.
Abutting public park. So if you read it, it's the.
Oh, okay. Landscaping for yard abutting public ground, public land, public something?
I think this is, what I'm reading out of it is if you have a yard, here's your guidelines. Some people don't have yards, such as comments. Did I get that right?
They wouldn't need.
We could, well, on your comment about public, yeah, I think we could add public property if that clarified.
It would. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I think I just copied the, the section title.
Yeah, otherwise, did that mean it's usable to the public, or I didn't quite know what it meant? So that's how.
Yes, in this area, it's just abutting the public right of way. But there's other sections where it does mean the park, and it's applying to like hedges and fences.
Yeah, I think it would apply to both, plant right of way on the marks.
Property is right of way.
Let's see, we added traffic hazard H, the roadway or section visibility standard. I highlighted section numbers. Typically, that's the last thing we do is make sure the section numbers are correct as you add and delete sections. So if you see highlighting, sometimes it's because we're going to go back and correct the sections. Okay, unobstructed passage J, we just added a requirement that, um, being more specific about vehicles, there must allow unobstructed, unobstructed passage of pedestrians and vehicles and shall have a minimum included eight-foot minimum vertical clearance above public sidewalks and 15-foot, uh, minimum vertical clearance above public roads. So, uh, seen this in other codes, just adding that clarification.
Okay, I'm glad you did that.
Mulch, uh, we talked about, uh, nonflo, we added non-floating mulch. I think that came up at one of the workshops. Uh, we just added there about prevention of movement of mulch, uh, from irrigation of the rainwater. And, uh, prohibited, prohibition of, uh, organic or organic floating, uh, materials in the...
Well, on the subject about that, um, a couple residents brought it to me, Jordan Sandback, about people's pools, but I know what it announces wrong. It's diatomaceous, uh, earth, they call it.
Oh yeah, that's, uh, used tree.
And they say it's a can, cancer causing or whatever and people are pumping it into their, you know what I'm saying?
You, uh, you throw it out for flea prevention, I believe. A certain type of earth, it's, uh, something that the fleas eat and literally they, they dehydrate.
Well, they, they, they use it in pool filters.
When I have a pool, you know, that...
Okay, and then there, people are saying, people are pumping their pools out into the street and it goes into the inner coast.
But there's certain pool filters that have that...
I had one years ago.
Mine's...
I call, I call, I, I used to call it dirt, but it's diatomaceous something.
Diatomaceous earth, yeah. Yeah, I have it, I have it on my...
Yeah. Is it, is it cancer causing or does it...
I don't know, I'm going to go look at the label down if you mention it.
Yeah. Two people brought it up to me and I, I never, I don't have a pool anymore, but I used to use it. It was good stuff that I used.
It coats the filter membrane?
Right.
And then creates like, it's actually supposed to be a really good filtration. But it could be very bad.
Yeah.
So I'll look at it.
It would have just coated all the fingers of the filter.
Right.
Yeah.
Alright, let's, let's continue. Now we're up to, uh, administration.
Yes, sir.
Section 94-62.
94-62, yes. Here we just, uh, added for clarification, uh, RM District 1, RL District 2, just so, um, it's easier to, to note than just District 1 or District 2. Added one of the criteria for variance that demonstrate that the variance requested does not increase the maximum density of development permitted on the property beyond that permitted, maximum permitted by the other lines of the district. I believe that's already included in the code, so we're just putting that as a criteria. Uh, more about the fees for variances. Okay, this is a section that, um, you can see 94-69. It seems redundant, but the one that we changed the title for. It does, does say yard for yard abutting public, so that's why we carried that over. We cannot see a reason. I couldn't find a reason for keeping that same section. Local planning agency, let's see. This was moved. Yeah, this was moved from, uh, chapter 78. We just updated the title of the, uh, four, what else? There, that's six, 94-71. Uh, we deleted, uh, three that's on your screen because we changed the definition of, uh, how you measure building height, so that, that becomes unnecessary. We just added clarification, paragraph C, all repair, reconstruction or replacement under subsection seven shall be subject to flood plain management regulations. Just adding that clarification. 94-162, this is where it was using condominium units, uh, where I believe the intent is there for it to be multi-family, that's... Same with 94-164. Elevations of grading, um, let's see, we added some language here about the lowest. Floor elevation shall be at least 18 inches above the crown of the road. That's copied from section 62-73, uh, and more sections copied from that section. Uh, we did add under G, uh, we, the blue, which is clarified for parcels located along Gulf Boulevard, not to exceed 24 inches above the crown of Gulf Boulevard. So, uh, allows you to go a little higher due to the high elevation of Gulf Boulevard there. And then adding H is clarifying that grading shall further be substituted stormwater drainage discharge prohibitions of section 62-73. Parking, just again, clarifying changing condominiums to multi-family. All off-street parking areas shall be paved. We just added with asphalt or constructed with concrete or paper bricks for parking. More multi-family, changing from condo to multi-family. And then we deleted, uh, that section under paragraph four, cause again, this is something that I'm not sure, uh...
Not enforced yet.
Yeah, it's not enforced, alright. 94-173, we just clarified that setbacks, things that can be in a, a setback can also include pool pumps, filters and standby generators. I'm sure you see a lot of those as well, as compressor reasons. 94-174, um, could not find any county code or, um, county code requirements for access to Gulf Boulevard and Cosway Boulevard. We just changed that to access management standards of the Florida Department of Transportation. Uh, heights, uh, we added, this was, this came up in one of the, the work sessions, allowing three habitable stories, uh, constructed alongside a garage or storage or two habitable stories over a garage or storage area. So I believe it consists of what, um, uh, the council discussed. We changed BFE to design flood elevation plus freeboard.
And that's only applicable, uh, if you're above base flood elevation.
Correct. Uh, we added, uh, gazebo there. We, you recall, we added a definition, so we allowed gazebo to also be permitted as a detached building. Okay, the, the C and D are, I believe there was discussion early on about prohibiting the rental of amenities with the house, like your pool, things like that. I know, uh, I know the attorney required one way in on that, but that was from, um, we did find that in another community and that's recurring on that, but I do have no notes.
Yeah, and, and to the extent that's been raised by legal, um, I would just say that, um, in addition to concerns about rental for, um, trains and rentals, housing and then the law rarely catches up to society and how fast, especially with all these tech platforms. And there, there are some platforms that have gone into renting portions of the property. You can rent out your deluxe tricked-out kitchen that you, you, you made a chef's kitchen. Rent out your kitchen, rent out your pool is where it started.
Right.
Um, and so people tell, oh, I'm not renting overnight stays. It's not a problem. I'm renting out amenities of my home and trying to, some, some language starting to, or trying to address that.
Boat docks, boat lifts, uh, that's a one in high demand. I could see the attraction if you're not using it.
Uh, for docks, we added, um, a smaller setback when you have those, uh, pie-shaped lots where the lot lines are converging towards the water. You really get penalized because they, then you eventually don't have, uh, any setback there. So we allow six, six foot, you, it allows the dock to go within six feet of the property line. If you wanted to go closer, you could request a variance, but without a variance, you could go six feet in those cases. Uh, then we just add some clarifying language, docks shall be further subject to the standards of requirements of Division 3 or, uh, of this chapter. Elevations and grading, this is where we talk about the, um, pools. Well, the lowest finished floor elevation, uh, should be at least 18 inches above the crown of the road. And then there's a case, shall, shall finished floor elevation be below the designed flood elevation plus freeboard? That is a requirement, but just having the clarifying language in here. We do have concrete, uh, we did add the concrete slab or rated pad for garage, covered parking, pool, equipment areas, um, let's see. Allowed to be 18 inches above the crown of the road or 24 inches above the crown of Gulf Boulevard.
Is it solved? The variation, uh, uh, that's going to be in the, when we get done with the pools specifically, okay.
And then, um, we did add a section there about structural fill, which will be limited to no more than 24 inches above the crown of the road. That's really what most beach communities are doing is just limiting the fill. And that prevents where people are mounting up their lots. And then specify that grading shall be, uh, subject to the requirements that you already have in section 62-73. Alright, parking of, this is motor homes. It didn't say mobile homes. Motor homes, RVs, uh, we just added there such vehicles may be parked in the, along the, I think, in and alongside of the house and in the rear for landlocked locks provided set at such vehicles. Is obscured from view from an adjacent property owner and front public rights away by using an opening fence or living fence. And then we clarified there that, uh, that it shall not extend, uh, vehicles will not extend more than five feet above the open fence or living fence. So, uh, just trying to come up with some standards there for how you obscure those, those vehicles when they're not in the driveway.
Such vehicle, so this relates to motor homes and motor homes included trailers, right?
Right.
Yeah, like a camper trailer?
Yes.
Yes.
And other types of trailers too, cause we had utility trailer, trailers covered in that, but people had box trailers. That's the same as a utility trailer, so.
Correct, yeah, I see.
Well, that's a welcome change.
And this is, this is the bones of trailers. Yeah, we, we did change it to, we did strike utility trailers, uh, we added other trailers, um, yes, to get in, get out of the, try to list all the, uh, the types of trailers you can have and then added the language about how they're obstructed from view whether or not, um, whether parked alongside or rear of the house. Okay, and this is for, uh, uh, construction, uh, construction trailers. We limited, we added a time limit there. Our construction is limited to pool installations or renovations, limited to interior renovations, a single trailer, similar vehicle, uh, used in conjunction with a construction that is not, uh, that is not removed daily. Must be parked on a stabilized parking area, being the requirements of section 10-77-2. So, uh, yeah, apparently this, this is an issue, so, uh, we just stated that you can't have it parked in the front yard, uh, unless you're removing it every day. Air conditioners, condensers, pool pumps and filters and standby generators. Again, just the, adding those two requirements for, uh, the noise restrictions. 94-219, we specified the roof architects and now that these are not permitted. And then, these are all setbacks. Probably, does, does the change in... Okay, yeah, so Melvia Estates lot, we changed that from lot 1 to 2 to lots 1 through 12. I don't think we could find where the other lots went, so, uh, or where they were referenced, so we, we specified that change on Melvia Estates.
We had 10 lots, it was not written at all. There we are. No setbacks.
Not uncommon for those things to happen, like as you go through version and, and you know, somebody backed out of 12 to a 2 by accident. Just, it's good to... I, I say that to say it's a testament to why you do this process.
Absolutely.
Okay, 94-251, tons as well as the hedges. We had a lot of back and forth on this one, um, and so we, we came up with a hedge maybe grown in the front setback area of residential property, which normally see six feet in height. And we came up with a lot of examples, just, uh, looking at Google, Google Maps and, uh, we see where there was a lot of hedges that were in the front yard that definitely exceeded three feet and, um, we thought we could live with six feet as long as it's not a visibility restriction.
That's a major change. Absolutely. Will change the look of our community. There right now, everything's open, you can see. And now we're saying, uh, six feet up, you can have totally privacy, but how close to the driveway to the street? Typical right angles, 50 to 20 feet from there. Why are we doing that?
Because of how the houses are already, everybody has that.
Yeah.
I mean, three feet is a bit, uh...
That's not really the hedge, that's more of an ornamental.
My initial guess, pretty high.
The number of yards of that, I mean, it's a hedge.
It's a fixture. Yeah, that's what I'm saying, I'm just, yeah.
But Kyle, I mean, you brought up a good point when they...
When they do, there's a lot of houses. I mean, we have to go through and tell people, cut, 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 cut.
We used to do that.
Well, you're right, I was gonna say, are we doing this because we don't want to pester those who already have it? Or are we doing it because there's actually a need to go to six feet?
I remember a few years ago, that was a big thing here, the hedges.
In the front?
In the front, yeah. Everything. I remember our old city manager, one of the houses on our street, the guy came down and wanted to cut those trees down. He said, no, trees are exempt. But the guy was growing stuff and he was exposing himself. That's why the hedges are.
And then I guess my next question is, is are people complaining because they can't grow to six feet? Or is there, is there a need for this change? Or is it just that?
That's overwhelming, yeah. I, I don't know.
I think the idea of a hedge is to create some privacy, some obscure a little bit from one property to another, as well as ornamental purposes. I had one neighbor that had lovely sea grapes that were regularly trimmed, but they were higher than six feet. And it was a big deal to, you know, cut them out higher than the limit. And it was a big deal to cut them down. It was a very pretty, well-done tropical look. So I'm all for landscaping that is consistent with our, our environment. You don't be in a kind of tropical area.
The word landscaping is what we consider a part of our, it used to be three foot, now we're gonna expand that landscaping a lot into six feet. That's what landscaping talks about. I mean, if we're looking for a natural tropical look, then we're not gonna have any type of lights.
I didn't say natural, but just in terms of, you know, well-capped.
That's the key, is a well-capped. And I can, I, I used to have a neighbor that did not maintain well. And they maintained the height requirement, but it was awful. It was, their choice of foliage was just completely out of control. Of course, we have good neighbors now, but I don't, I'm not for this one. I agree.
So Kyle, what it says, a hedge may be grown in the front setback area. So that's, that's how far away?
From the front of the house, usually twenty-five feet.
So twenty-five feet from like the curb? It'd have to be that, that far away from the curb?
Don't, from the curb, usually the edge of the road's about fifteen to twenty feet to get to the private property.
Okay.
And then you have another twenty-five to the house.
And see, this is in conflict with what we currently have for homes. If you, like, I'd love to have an extension on the front of my home, but I can't because it would go out in front of my neighbor's homes. And there's a certain line that's set up and the code prevents you from doing that. So I don't know, I just, I think we all move here for a reason. And I don't wanna make a dramatic change like that.
So this is talking about a hedge, right? So somebody has multiple bushes. So there's a lot of houses that have that?
There are.
Like in the, in the front of their house, relatively close to the front door-ish area.
They've not been approached and filled with.
No, I'm just saying that we have that.
That's my ask, if we're not going to adjust it, make it more, bring people closer to what we're enforcing, then then we're gonna have to find a way to enforce it so that we don't have the code that is being enforced.
I thought we were enforcing it at six feet. They were telling people to chop things down to six feet.
Yeah, once you get past the front setback. But it's eight feet now. So we up, we up that. But the problem is, once you get to the edge of the front edge of the house, the only thing that's allowed it's a three-foot hedge. There's so many people that, some people have close to eight feet.
I misunderstood. I thought we were talking.
In between the windows.
Help me understand then what we're talking about. We're talking about lights like side, between, we're talking in front of the house, not the side lots.
Yeah, so imagine you step out on your front porch or you're right out of your front door and you're able to look to the right and see down the street. You're able to look down to the left and see down the street. And two or three years from now, if you change that, you'll only see this view instead of this view.
Unless you step out three feet.
More than that.
Could somebody draw a picture? Because I'm not quite sure what we're talking about. We're not talking about side lots, excuse me, the side lot, property lines. We're talking about the front.
Hedges are on the side property line.
Yes.
Once they get to the front edge of the house, they can't be higher than three feet.
That's what it says down.
And they're gonna extend that to six?
Yes.
The front edge of the house meaning?
Where you, where you just explained, you step out the front door.
The front of your house, where you have windows. You may have windows on both sides, and in between the windows, there's mountain doors.
Yes.
So like it's been said a couple of times, initially when you put those little, what are those green and yellow things? The plants, what are they called? Patty, green, yellow.
I know what you're talking about.
Yeah, pettus forms. So then you put them in and they're this high, but then two years from now, they're six feet.
This is what we have right now.
I think most of them, a lot of people have higher than six feet now. I mean, higher than three, higher than three, I should say.
Yes.
Yeah, it's because it's not been maintained. It's not, we've not, we've not gone after the code enforcement.
The discourse you're having isn't what's out there. It's based on what's out there. Is that a change we wanna make to adapt to our current reality for some lots? Or do we wish to hold firm to the existing code and enforce as appropriate and educate as appropriate? And the question now is, are we changing it because we want to change it? Or because like, well, it's been, I don't mean this casually, just in the way that I've been characterised. It's been flouted long enough and it's kind of changed the community a little bit. Do we wish to recognize that change or not?
Is the objection the height? Or is the objection that they're poorly capped, not trimmed?
In my case, it would be both.
I was gonna say yes, because I think that answers the question from.
A lot of these people have underground water. So now you've got your electrical box, which is about four feet off the ground, five feet. Now you're gonna allow that to cover up the shrub here.
But is that a hedge?
Could be, you can claim that hedge near your electrical box.
But I mean, by definition of a hedge, it's like multiple.
That's, that's a good question. What do you define a hedge as? You know, your definition of a hedge point is different.
It clearly says fences, walls, hedges shall be permitted, but not placed beyond or overgrowing the waterfront facing side. Oh, this is the back, sorry, I'm looking at the back.
May I, is your microphone on?
What's that?
Is your microphone on?
Oh, sorry. It keeps blinking out, I don't know what's going on with it.
Okay, so in, in sub one, it's eight feet on the side or the rear. And on the front setback is what we're talking about. Should it be three feet or six feet?
Yes, ma'am.
So if you look at, I don't mean to put this up. If you just look at one street in particular, like Alita's is a good example of a lot of people with hedges, I'll see like a square screen. I'm gonna have to override yours.
Yeah, I can stop sharing.
I got so close to that.
Those bushes. I'm gonna get split the difference.
All right, now there's a new design.
But you'll see here, if you look at, if you look at each house, the front of the house is where your front setback typically starts. And then you'll see the lines, which is the actual property lines. So everybody with their head, like the lining of shrubs on their side property lines that are going out to their front property lines are in violation essentially. Because these are all way higher.
Okay, let's say that currently they were three feet. Are they still in violation because they're in the setback?
No, because if they're three feet, they wouldn't be a violation. But they would be a violation if you look, a lot of them were encroached into the right of way.
I mean, the right of way.
Yeah.
I'm saying, is it because they're in the right of way? Are they in violation regardless of the height?
Yes, and the right of way is kind of a different animal because there's a lot of things in the right of way that shouldn't be in a right of way. But we can't go and enforce everything like that.
Right, well, if that's the case, then I certainly don't want six feet blocking the right of way.
Sure.
Because you wouldn't be able to see, you wouldn't be able to see your driveway too.
We figured that, that's what the law has, like.
Somewhere coming down.
With police or whatever. The best way to tackle that was the line of sight issue, that's why you're running it in there.
So just as an example, the, the house, and I'm sorry, I don't know the address, but the, the house that's directly across from Sixth Street access. So a lot of us gather there, we know this house, it's a lovely, modern house. It has gorgeous tropical foliage. And that.
So here's a different thing. When you're on Gulf Boulevard or College Boulevard, you have different exceptions. You're allowed to have walls and fences six feet in the front setback because you're on a county road.
To block from the traffic.
But the, the yard that faces Sixth Street also has a lot of tropical plants.
Okay, so let me, let me do the devil's hat for you here. You've got this, you showed me a street that has plenty, plenty of violations. Now go to a street that you know doesn't have any. Show me how nice and clean it is.
Eighth Street.
Twenty.
Twenty-two.
Also Eighth Street. I just think down those streets you're on this one. But yeah, this is an example.
So.
There's like one down here, lots eighty-five. Oh, yeah, it's a lot, lot B.
So now you, you can totally change the look of that street by one by just altering this code to a six feet. Now there's an attraction. And now what you are used to because of this one code change, your entire street could look completely different. I'm not for it.
We have, we have hedge bushes that are over here. Put it right there at the corner. We have these big old, what's it called, paddy?
I don't know. Oh, the plumaria?
No, the palm tree. Right outside the door.
The Florida palm.
Oh, the ginormous one? Oh, I don't know what those are called, the ugly ones.
Anyway, you come out the door, we're meeting all the requirements. You still can't see anything. Because that, the tree I'm referring to, or the big bush I'm referring to, it's a palm, some type of palm.
Oh, the sego.
It's a sego palm that goes shoo. So that bad boy's right there. You can't see the street, you can't see anybody that direction. Then we have several little hedge bushes that are all three feet. So everything in that definition meets, you still can't see.
Well, maybe I don't wanna see.
Exactly. Because I'm usually in my boxer shorts.
The other, the other thing is it's, you can hide a lot easier in a six-foot hedge than in a three-foot, you know, prowler.
Could.
Yeah, or coyotes. That's true.
It, it would seem to me, I mean, just generally, and for purposes of this land development code review, at least two of you are not in favor of this, which means in our current composition, it's unlikely to pass. I think as, as we're talking about workshopping this, we can advance on the draft, and that's not language we wish to see changed.
Yeah.
And then if, if and when it's presented at first and second reading, and for some reason that changes, we can always make those amendments at that stage. But given how hard your folks have worked, I don't wanna.
Rewrite my case.
Make a return.
So you allow me here, city attorney, or I wouldn't let you.
Yes.
Take back screen share.
All right, let's see. Paragraph six, we just added electrical wiring should not be placed on the surface of a fence or wall that faces the street or adjacent properties. So if somebody wants to have lights on their fence, the wiring should not be exposed to the outside. And then we also added that unless they're plug-in lights, then they have to get a electrical permit. Plug-in or solar, that's number fifteen. Oh, let's see, number sixteen, related to hedges or planting materials. Trees shall be planted no closer than three feet to a property line. And then this is to prevent them from growing, obviously, into the property, into the adjacent property. And the language in there about them being maintained and not overhang on the buddy properties already in the code. Earthbergs, it was, they were prohibited. We just changed that to permitted, subject to the elevation grading requirements of ninety-four dash one sixty-eight in this chapter. And then twenty-four, all walls, fences and hedges must comply with the roadway intersection visibility requirements of, oh, I forgot the section number of this chapter. But yeah, we have the intersection visibility requirements. So yeah, any, anything you plant has to, is subject to that intersection visibility. And that could address your, your plantings in the right of way. Home occupations, ninety-four dash two fifty-two. These changes are all to be consistent with current Florida statutes, where they do allow a limited number of persons working there in the home occupation beyond just the members of the household.
That surprised me.
That is a statutory change from twenty-twenty-two, I believe. And it is, it is a preemption. What, what you see here in Mr. Saren's proposed language is to align with the statute. There's little else you can do all form. In this particular instance, a preemption, it was retroactive and subsumed any municipal regulation of short term, I mean, of home-based businesses in that regard. So, you know, I just, I say that to say, as a, as a word of caution, because while we're on this topic, I think to the extent you've seen short-term rentals as a topic of debate amongst a lot of communities, and this is a residential use and not a commercial use, and that debate play out, I think that as more and more communities become aware of this statutory change, you are going to see that fight over what we used to call Euclidean zoning play out more and more. Like this should be here, not there. Like why are they able to operate a UPS depot center out of their garage? Or, you know, a watch repair shop? It makes sense in the context of like Etsy shops and the cabinets, but then it goes well beyond that.
Are there restrictions on the public coming to the business?
It cannot operate in a way that changes the traffic pattern of building. But if one person pulls up in the driveway and leaves, and then somebody else, no, that's seen as inconsistent. Home driveway might use.
You know, rather than actually spelling it out, are we better off just pointing directly down to the statute?
Maybe worthwhile. I mean, it's the only, so some of the things in the statute, you know, for example, as it releases sign codes, and this is something that clouds that sign code discussion we had, it says that sign codes can be enforced for these. So if your code looks at it as only residential, one of the discussions we had is, we don't have commercial, we don't need to worry about this. Home-based business preemption is one of the reasons you may wish to address it anyways in the event of maybe in your residential areas. But it says in the statute, sign codes shall be restricted in the manner set forth, you know, that any business must still conform to sign restrictions. You can call that out there, I think you'd be just as fine to say, to strike it and point to the statute. Say, you know, home occupation shall conform to all the statutory references set forth in, and I forget the statutory reference.
Because if I didn't know any better, I looked at that and said, oh, well, let's just look at the statute.
And that's a drafting question, and we take our guidance from you folks as the policymakers, as to how you'd like to reflect about it. Six, one way, half a dozen the other, Mary.
I like having things in the statute that are clear. I understand what you're thinking, I don't think that'll deter anyone that really wants to do it. And so if Grandma decides she wants to start, have a business of her wonderful precious moments collection, and people come and go to...
As long as there's not a line of cars that are blocking or otherwise not abiding by the parking restrictions. I don't know that we would have any ability to, just because she's doing that commercial enterprise out there, that we'd have any ability to address that house wise. Now, of course, all other codes apply. So if they're in our driveway, blocking things, or parking on our infrastructure, or allowing...
Industry.
They're doing business at one in the morning and creating noise, and all those things still apply.
Well, there's a lot of talk of charter businesses, but it's actually, you've got a house, and it looks like a house, you can run a charter, often not.
A charter business?
Boat charters.
Oh.
I don't want a couple of cars full of people to run your boat, and pay you to take the fishing.
Because what's the difference between your buddy pulling up and four people who are paying you pulling up, parking in the driveway?
Well, that's right.
We had that since, uh...
Yeah.
Right near you.
Right.
Yeah. There, a guy built the house. First thing he did was put a dock in there for his charter boat. And he was going to have charter fishing, he'd run out of, what was that, seven hundred or eight hundred?
The address. The address.
I forget the house number. But anyway, so his intention was to have everyone come down the road around three, four o'clock in the morning. Get out with a beer.
Get on the boat.
Yeah, get on the boat.
They still do, they're just smarter now.
The main, now remember, they still do have to meet the definition of a home-based business, which contemplates people living in the structure. I don't wish to say that every home can be concerned, and, or wish to suggest that every home can suddenly be converted to, you know, a quickie mart or something. It does, it still have to be a home, it's just what you can do with your home is enhanced.
So in his example, that would be a permitted use?
Subject to all the other restrictions. I don't, as I sit here now, I don't hear anything in the hypothetical that just by virtue of somebody using their dog for commercial purposes is making a problem.
Certainly, their car, their driveway has eight cars in it, and it's doing this daily, that's probably a violation. But sneaking four or five people in or going and taking them up somewhere else is not a violation.
All righty.
Please continue.
That's just another, on the screen, just another fee there. Railway and driveway intersection visibility, we just added some clarifying language to this. And actually, this was moved from chapter fifty, with the blue or the changes that we made. Specifying that specifically obstructs the visibility between two and a half feet and ten, and ten feet above the center line of the intersection street. So that's, that's with how a lot of communities do it. So it doesn't prohibit everything in the triangle, but it just prohibits things that are, that are between those heights. Postal construction control line, that was moved from chapter ten. There'll be a lot of renumbering here. Swimming pools, hotels, and spas, this was also moved from chapter ten.
And where is the provision that related to the variances?
That is ninety-four dash two nine three, section G. We updated to twenty-four inches, but...
Oh, yeah, yeah, I missed that. Yeah, that in blue, that means we changed that from eighteen to twenty-four.
It's most of them. If you have someone that's already, you know, thirty-six, forty-eight inches, and they're trying to remodel a pool, in that case, they're going to have to get a variance, because it's a continuation, you know, changing the structure or expanding non-conformity. But for a lot of the ones that were within two to three inches, this should take care of it without going too big of a window.
Yeah, so we have one pending now that we're aware of, that this came up.
Oh, did that go up number one?
I think that was one of the objections that was raised.
Was it? I don't know that the measurements were on that, but the prior was pretty close to it.
Ninety-four dash two ninety-four, the blue there is what we changed, what was moved, we just clarified our district one, our district two. Portable spas, we added paragraph five, that such spas shall be plugged in rather than hardwired for electrical service. Again, these are portable spas.
That's what makes them portable, I guess.
Yes. Division three, that was moved from chapter thirty. We just, ninety-four dash two ninety-seven, we just corrected that Pinellas County Water and Navigation are the permit for viewers there. Catwalks, we clarified, shall be open wide than four feet. That's already in there, but we just added that to make it clear.
Why do we care how wide a catwalk is?
Your county does.
They do?
It's because you're extending beyond the limits, limitations of your dock. And they're trying to keep as much out of the water as they possibly can. So they're within reason allowing you to build a dock and a catwalk. But if you build a driveway going out into the, you know, towards the, uh... Yeah, basically, where everyone has rights to take their boats.
Might be that much stronger, it's better than a three feet, ten feet.
You'll see there, paragraph eight, we added a requirement for floating docks larger than two hundred square feet shall require a permit through the city and shall meet the requirements of this section. I guess that's, yeah, getting requested floating docks. And then ninety-four dash two ninety-eight, we just added that clarified language, and a lot of properties in which lot lines converge towards the water, you can reduce the setback to six feet without a clearance. All right, satellite antennas, this was moved from chapter eighty-two. And then, let's see, telecommunications towers, that's just renumbering there. So all these sections are just being renumbered. Then we added Article seven, this is amateur radio station antenna instructions.
You got to back up to ninety-four, two nine seven, B.
We talked about two nine seven.
Eighty-one eighty.
Two ninety-seven, ninety-four dash two ninety-seven.
Scott.
Yeah, here on one seventy-five, go to eighty-one eighty.
And it used to be two ninety-seven.
Okay.
Three fifty-six.
Ninety-four, three fifty-seven, council members, that we're referring to?
Yeah, section B, on the bottom of the page, telecommunication. Electronic industry association, they're all...
Yeah, I made a note on that comment earlier.
Were we trying to get rid of the term condominium in all cases?
Well, when the intent is multifamily, condominium deals with ownership, and if somebody decided to turn theirs into an apartment, that would be multifamily, but a condominium would also be multifamily.
Okay.
It's also very interesting to look at all the condominiums.
But on page one seventy-seven, we still have the word condominium.
Oh, really?
Is that supposed to be multifamily, that's what I guess I should ask them.
Let me see. Yeah, in some cases, negative should be condominium.
One more. Did you pass it there? You just passed it. The one seventy-seven, up a little bit.
D.
Down further.
D.
Right there.
In blue.
Yeah, yeah, um, yeah, that should probably be multifamily, residential use.
Interesting, it's already in blue.
What's that?
It's interesting that it's already in blue, for some reason, you must have already caught it once.
Yeah, yeah, I'm not sure why it's not changed to multifamily, I think the intent should be to be multifamily. But let me, I'll take a look at that. One seventy-seven.
And we'll be talking about towers and things the next time?
The general will of the body earlier was to revisit the issue of towers, and with some insight and consideration to some of the feedback provided today. But we're going to, rather than exhaustively try to address some of the deficiencies in the existing code. And I think Mr. Seren has made some drafts that would move us in a positive direction there, and those were reflected before you. But those can be reviewed with some consideration towards some of the points raised this evening.
Yeah, so we did have this, Article seven, specifically addressed amateur radio station antennas instructions. And this is from a model code. And yeah, again, the intent is to address specifically ham radio.
I think this opens up to answer five.
Yeah, I sort of figured there might be more discussion than you'd want to have or consideration on that. But it does allow, you know, it does specify height for amateur radio antennas.
Yeah, we're going to, we're going to come back to this one. Let Randy review it, and then we'll review this in one section at our next meeting.
Okay, then we added the, this article dealing with solar energy systems, just adding some further specifications on solar panels. Establishes the height, establishes limitations on their visual impacts because of their reflectivity. But yeah, and again, we borrowed this from another community that has a stadium, which one specific?
It was a county.
And then Article eight is development agreements, commonly required, included in the land development code. So this just specifies the process for development agreements that are approved under Florida statutes. And you may, you may see, you know, if you get a large development, you may see somebody trying to, that people need to do a development agreement at some point. But be glad to answer any of your questions, I think that's...
This just defines the process as determined by the state.
It is, consistent with state law, but it specifies the process that it goes through, for blood. And then we did redo these, you're not seeing them, but there are some exhibits that show setbacks. It probably would help explain the pool or the hedge situation a little better, but we do have those, and we have redone those. But we'll wait till you come up with the final numbers and include those.
These are, these are the maps?
The, yeah, the little illustrations, yeah.
Pictures.
So we added, you know, if you went with the six feet in height, that's changed on the line. And I'll provide those in the next draft, that they'll also be drafted. But that's pretty much it with the land development code recommendation.
Council, any other comments? Just going to back page of these fees, are they in the performance of what we're charging for this? So the first...
Cheaper, more...
Page one ninety-three is what our current fees are, right off the website. And then I asked Genite Engineering, which is our more complex land plan review, what they would charge for all of them. And that's the numbers that they gave me. I don't know how we feel about it, but I thought it'd be better to get more in line with what our second plan review would charge if we sent everything. A lot of the stuff we do in-house, but I don't know.
So on one ninety-four, we outsourced to those guys, that's what they were charged?
That's what they were charged, yes. And they're relatively cheaper than most. But then the town renting shores, just for example, was one of their fee schedules. They're about cheaper than everything, not a rate our fees in a while. So the idea is to do resolutions to set all these fees, wherever we end up, just to be up to date. So a little bit more of that, really.
So right now, when we do it in-house, that's what you do?
Yeah, a lot of this, you know, like fences and HVACs, generators, you know, shits. But, I mean, we probably should, if not what the full cost genite would charge, buy something more realistic.
These are, they're not national increases in hand, if it frees up more of your time. And I actually would prefer the party doing this. Is there any time difference, like, you doing, is it quicker this way, or?
Just, it's more time, I can do something else. Currently, the genite turns them around with the dates.
And it puts less stress on you for meeting the deadlines of having to call up a permit. Okay, if anybody, are there any other questions or comments from Mr. Seren?
Yes, sir.
How about the city manager or the city attorney? All right, well... All right, well, last topic is unfinished or, is unfinished business?
General business.
Our general business, do we have any, any general business already? Is everyone ready to go?
I do, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I, I wanna advise the council of, of an interpretation, a legal issue that I think needs, warrants some attention, it won't require any specific action on your part at this time. In the March elections we went through, we did a series of charter amendments and revisions, and one of them had to deal with the, the voting requirement and specifically that voting on ordinance and resolution shall be by roll call and, and that no action of the council be valid unless adopted by an affirmative vote of a majority of the council. Earlier tonight, I said that I'm, I'm always open to reviewing my own opinions and thoughts based on new information. In this instance, I don't have new information, but I spent a lot of time reflecting on this. And I, to this point, opined you that a majority of the council is three out of the four of you, but your council until November 2026 is a body of seven, presently operating as a body of four. I think the better reading and the reading that would protect this council and the city better, were there to be some legal challenge two or three years from now, would be to continue to interpret your council as a council of seven until November and thus where, where we require a quorum of a majority of the council and a vote of a majority of the council, that both of those should be four in both instances. I know that I have specifically opined otherwise and said it is capable of two interpretations. The more I reflected on this after the fact, I feel that the more prudent, more conservative approach would be to say that any affirmative act of this council requires all four of you and any meeting requires all four of you here. I've already brought this to the attention of the clerk and the manager before I brought this to your attention tonight. We have only two meetings, the April meeting and July meeting where one person was not present up here remotely, we can ratify the decisions there. There have been no votes since this took effect in April May, depending on how you look at how all this stuff was done, where a resolution of ordinance was approved otherwise. To the extent you've given any direction, it has been informal by three one, I've talked with the manager and those are things that are coming back before you anyways, so it was, you know, preliminary direction on this project and that, but he's bringing a change order that actually documents it. And so those things will come before you. If there is anything that needs ratification, I'll present it to you. But I think my job for you is to manage risk. The manager, I mean, the mayor was just at the Florida League of Cities Annual Conference, I did a presentation there where I spoke for four hours and presented on ethics and sunshine law and records. And one of the things I said is my job is to tell you, here be dragons. And in most things, I let each of you go and determine how you wanna face dragon, you wanna slay them alive. But my job is to tell you, here be dragons. And I recognize, I think I'm doing the better thing for you as a council to say your decisions are insulated from potential challenge one, two, three years from now, if we don't even have that issue on the table. And so rather address it now. I never, I never love saying, I don't think this was the best decision at the outset. I don't think it was the wrong decision, but I don't think it was the best one. I think this is a better course of action. And so I want to inform you tonight formally that my advice is going forward, if we are to have a meeting, all four of you, so long as you are four, all four of you should be present. And going forward, to the extent we are having a vote on a resolution or ordinance, that should be a vote of all four of you to take an affirmative action of this body. We will review and see if there's anything that needs to be presented for ratification. Part of the preliminary review, I did not see any major issues. But again, I owed it to you to tell you this and I did not want to be in a situation where I'm sitting in the day is thinking this but not saying it and then creating issues later. So that is all I have on that. I'm happy to answer any questions. I know each of you spent a considerable amount of time asking me questions about precisely this issue. And so if you're frustrated or upset by this, you know, elucidating my decision, I, I fully accept and understand that, but I think that this is the more conservative and prudent approach for the city.
Council?
So just to clarify, you said it.
Ms. Rettig.
It, just to clarify, you said for any resolution or ordinance, so that means any business at all?
Functionally, yes. And because the language is no action of the council shall be valid unless adopted by an affirmative vote of a majority of the council, and the council until November 2026 is a council of seven, in, in how the council is defined. And I know, again, I know each of you have asked me that and I've sent emails on that and said it was capable of vote, but I think this is the reading, the more I reflect on it. And I wanna be very clear, this is not the product of any one thing happening. This was not because somebody said something to me, this is not because we received some kind of, you know, email or letter, this is me doing my job and saying, you know what, I, I still think there's a better way. It was one of those things that sat there in the back of my mind as I drove around and reflected on it and I did discuss it with some of my colleagues and thought, you know what, yeah, that is the better way and that's why we're here.
I, I don't know that.
Not why we're here, but why are you bringing this to your attention?
Appreciate it very much. Appreciate you bringing it to our attention and it's, it's not a concern of mine in the sense that we were dealing with extraordinary circumstances, we were trying to make things work. You told us that there was doubt, you felt that it was supportable. In the event that there is an issue, we can still try to support it, but you're also saying that it's more conservative to be a little more cautious and going forward, we can do that. So thank you for bringing it forward.
Mr. Roberts?
So one option would be if we chose to, we could bring on three additional council members.
That continues to be an option at all times to read, with an understanding of how those terms would phase based on the charter language adopted.
If we brought on one additional.
All four members, I approve of all three.
Right, or at least one, and then once you have one appointed, then subsequently, depending on how you time the due thing.
So we did bring in, bring on one additional, we would then have five, obviously, so then the quorum would be still four.
The quorum would be, the quorum would be still four, present, and, but a majority vote would be four out of those five.
Correct, okay. Okay.
Okay. Mr. Moore, I appreciate you bringing this to our attention and totally understandable how you may question your own opinion and think about it. I know that the Form six, the whole, the election, everything has been a difficult undertaking to manage, not only for you, but for the rest of us. We know what we're supposed to be going forward and let's see how it works.
Thank you for your guided time on the end of a lengthy meeting, I appreciate it.
So speaking of Form six, is there any new information?
We've got down the judicial injunction with the Form one being sufficient, adding not filing Form six yet. The, the, the reality is, I don't see that changing until the next legislative session and the legislature may try to come at it another way.
Oh, agreed.
Agreed, agreed that they will, and they'll, they just didn't provide enough reasons, they'll find reasons.
So right now, it's Form one.
Yes, Form one. Unless you've already filed your Form since.
Yeah, maybe they just went to the people's handle. It's like, hey, sure. And then we'll be dead before you.
All right, if we have no other general business.
Motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Call of favor.
Bye.
Let's go.